Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 1, 2024 City of Fraser Regular Planning Commission Meeting. Please place any cell phones or any other devices that might disrupt the meeting in silent mode or turn them off. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Agenda item two is a roll call. Ms. Grignia, would you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Barr.
Here.
Chair Zarnicky.
Present.
Commissioner Farina.
Present.
Commissioner Kyle. Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Teller.
Present.
Commissioner Warnock.
We have a quorum present this evening. Agenda item three, approval of the agenda as published. Are there any questions or discussion on the agenda? Entertain a motion to approve as published.
I move to approve as published. The agenda is published.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Commissioner Barr to approve the agenda as published, the May 1, 2024 agenda as published. Would you do a roll call, please, Ms. Grignia?
Commissioner Barr.
Yes.
Chair Zarnicky.
Yes.
Commissioner Farina.
Yes.
Commissioner Teller.
Yes.
Motion carries, okay. Agenda item four is the chairperson's opening remarks. Tonight's meeting will follow the agenda that was posted online and has been printed for you here and is available at the entrance of the room. It is important to let everyone know that the Planning Commission is created by state law. The commission is comprised of seven members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The role of the Planning Commission is to plan and promote the efficient coordinated development of the city for the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. We are not here to negotiate with applicants or to allow everything an applicant is requesting. However, the Planning Commission does have the power to approve certain requests and recommend others, depending on the nature of the request and whether all of the standards in the zoning ordinance have been met. The Planning Commission may also impose conditions on a proposed project in order to ensure that those standards are met. Other individuals seated here this evening are the city's legal representative from O'Reilly Ranch, LEO PC, Alyssa Erickson, the city planner from McKennan Associates, Lawrence Sayer, and city clerk Cindy Grignia. There is no public hearing this evening, so I will skip those comments. Agenda item five is approval of the minutes for the April 3, 2024 meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I have one slide on page three at the top. It said it was reviewed if Klein was a city of County Road. That should be or.
I'm sorry, which paragraph are you at?
First paragraph, second line.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. All righty.
Sorry.
That's good. Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, I mean, I'm sorry, the minutes as revised with that one correction.
I make a motion to approve it all as or with the slight revision.
Okay, and support?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Teller and support by Commissioner Farina to approve the minutes, April 3, 2024, with one correction. Ms. Grignia, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barr.
Yes.
Chair Zarnicky.
Yes.
Commissioner Farina.
Yes.
Commissioner Teller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item six, new business public hearings. A is none, B site plan, site plan 23-04, 34575 Commerce Road, Drivergent Transportation. Ms. Yer, do you have the review?
Yes, thank you, Chair Zarnicky. So this is a site plan for 34575 Commerce Road. It's located in the IC industrial control district. So the applicant is required to submit a site plan for the outdoor storage. They're storing school buses there in the back of the lot. I would like to make the clarification that in our review, we mentioned a previous site plan. I think more accurate would be current site conditions because we actually aren't able to find a site plan on record. So we're treating this as an original approval throughout this process. Currently, they're storing it on gravel. There's also paved gravel area on the front that will need to be restored, and they propose reseating the front to restore that front yard. So this use is permitted in the IC district. In terms of parking, the applicant on their site plan indicates 25 spaces, but are required to have 27 spaces. Additionally, there are no barrier free, and they would be required to have 27, or sorry, not 27. If they have 27 spaces, they were required to have two barrier free spaces, which they also would need to indicate on the site plan and dimension. Additionally, outdoor storage states that if they're using it to park wheeled vehicles, it should be paved to a surface acceptable to the Planning Commission based on use. Additionally, the entire parking area, including parking spaces, maneuvering lanes, and drives required, I guess, so it'll need to be paved with asphalt or concrete unless the Planning Commission determines that it's, they're okay with gravel for some reason. And we'll also note that it's a budding Sweeney drain. In terms of the ingress and egress, the applicant has not provided the driveway width, so we would require that to be on the site plan as well. Additionally, we have, they have not indicated a loading space, which is required, so we'd also require that to be indicated on the site plan. In terms of landscaping, I believe this picture is a bit outdated since it's, it's a little bit, the lawn is more restored than this current image on the, on page three, but they still do have a gravel parking in the front. And then screening, this, so screening, the city attorney's office and I and our, my office went back and forth on this, and they did a thorough dig into the regulations as there are some parts in the ordinance that seemed almost kind of conflict or go back and forth. So if I miss anything, feel free to correct me, Ms. Erickson. But screening is required. We noted the screening provisions of section 3252, which encompasses outdoor storage. However, the, the use that it is approved under, under section 32144, the industrial uses, would require that a chain link fence not be less than six feet, not be less than 50 feet from the front property or side street property line, and additionally, a 20-foot green belt planting strip, no less than eight feet in height in order to screen the storage of the materials. So given that they're indicating that they have an eight-foot existing fence, however, they would need a, according to this, a 20-foot green belt planting strip that is eight feet, and it also would have to be tall enough to screen what they're storing, the buses, which are understanding is that's over eight feet. So we believe that they would need a variance for those items if they feel that it's a hardship to comply with that 20-foot green belt buffer. No signage has been received. Any new signage will require a permit. No modifications to the existing lighting. We did send it to Public Safety, who they noted that there's a diesel storage tank, above-ground storage tank. Public Safety is fine with it being there, but it needs to be, it needs to be brought up to code, and I believe in October of last year, Captain Gillies informed them that, but no steps have been taken yet. And Mr. Vigron also provided his review. This was under the assumption that it was not paved when I told him that we would likely require it to be paved. He said that that would trigger a full engineering review and that the stormwater system would likely need to be upgraded as well, and the county drain and soil erosion would also likely factor in. So given all of these outstanding items and, in our opinion, the requiring of a variance, we would recommend that the applicant revise and resubmit probably after they get the variance, but we would like a more complete site plan.
Okay. I got myself a little confused there, so I apologize. So the variance, they could do the variance on the landscaping, possibly. I mean, they could.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, I believe, and again, correct me if I'm misspeaking, Ms. Erickson, but I believe the variance would be if they did not want to comply with the 20-foot green belt, and if, and I believe it would also be to screen some, or to store something higher than the screening, which is.
At least eight feet high. Okay, and that could both go for a variance if we ask for that? Is that correct? Unless we approve it the way it is? Do we have the authority to approve it the way it is? No?
Yeah.
All right. That was my question. Okay. Commissioner Farina.
Oh, the variance, is that, does that have to go to the ZBA?
It would, yes.
Or the landscaping variance?
Would you like me? Okay. So it would be for the screening requirements. I know we probably think of the berm as being landscaping, but it is part of the screening requirements for the use in the IC district. So when our office looked at, you know, the way that we're characterizing this use, when you look at the ordinance, it has very specific requirements for this type of use in terms of outdoor storage, which were the, the requirements that Ms. Sayer just mentioned. So the variances would essentially be if the applicant could not comply with those screening requirements as regulated by the IC district.
Ms. Yer, can I ask for clarification on your comment on your report under screening?
Yeah, and I will, I will note that we, we did have some discussion after this was, it was sent out as well, so.
Okay. So we're not going to, we don't have the option of accepting it as nonconformity? Is that correct?
So since we, we couldn't find an existing site plan with that approval prior, then we're, again, treating this as an original approval, so no.
No. Okay. Because we're, we are treating it as an original site plan to meet requirements?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Farina.
In the screening, to go along that one wall that, side of the property where the fire lane is, would be pretty difficult to put a berm in there. Is that part of what, what you're saying has to be done? Or a taller fence has to be put up?
I don't, is the, is the berm part of the 20-foot buffer? The way that the IC district reads is that the fence must be no less than six feet in height, located no less than 50 feet from the property line or side street property line, and that 20-foot green belt has to be outside of the fence. That has to be at least eight feet or more in height in order to screen the view of the storage materials from the street and adjacent properties.
So I don't think you answered my question. Does it have to be a berm, or could they do it with a taller fence?
So you have to have the 20-foot green belt.
Yes.
Correct, in addition to the fence.
Correct.
Yes.
Back to the parking lot where there's existing gravel and the requirement to pave it or asphalt it. Do we have the authority to waive that requirement?
So under 3252, if open storage is, is for parked wheeled vehicles, it can, it must be paved to parking lot standards or provided with a surface acceptable to the Planning Commission based on the use.
Any more questions from the administration?
What about the findings of the Public Safety Officer? I don't see that on the, on the site plan at all.
So in terms of, they did not note the storage tank? Is that what you're?
Correct.
They did, they did not know, and we would want that noted. You're correct.
Is there, is there, is there a permit required for that?
There's not a permit, but the fire, fire safety, or Public Safety would want fire suppression and fire safety. I'm not super up to date on, or at all, on the fire code, but they'd want it to be stored according to the fire code.
You want the building fire suppressed?
Sorry, not the building fire, just the enclosure up to fire, international fire code. Fire suppression might have been the wrong words.
Okay.
Looks like they also want pylons installed for vehicle impact protection.
Right.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Teller, what did you say?
It looks like they also want pylons installed for.
Right, some type of a, right. Okay. That would go through, if the site plan's approved, that would go through review by the fire department, and it would have to be an acceptable, you know?
Yeah, so I did speak with Captain Gillies, and he mentioned that he's happy to follow up on this, but since they're going through site plan review now, he's hoping that they'll get it up to what he said to, and he'll go out and check again, so.
I have one more question, Ms. Yer, and correct me if I'm wrong. We're, we are treating this as a new site plan, brand new. Is the applicant aware of that, to understand that it's kind of a, a beginning of the site plan approval process? As, you know, because we can't find the former site plan?
Have you talked with the applicant?
Um, I have spoken with the applicant. I wouldn't, I don't think I've said specifically that.
Okay. Okay. I will ask the applicant or applicants to come forward, whoever wants to speak, and come to the table and introduce yourselves and tell us how you are associated with the site plan. And go ahead and sit down, please.
Speak into the mic, please.
Yes, into the mic.
I'll go first. I'm, I'm the applicant. I represent the applicant. We did not know it was going to be treated as a, as an initial site plan approval, which is fine. It is what it is, and we're going to do our best to work through it. We have a good tenant. We purchased this property four years ago. During the closing process, no red flags were raised about any of the items that have been, have happened between now and then. So we're caught a little bit off guard, except for the last year worth of craziness because the parking on the front, which has been, which has been remedied, and much of the site plan approved, these requirements you're making are sort of very unique to this particular tenant. So whether or not the applicant, we're going to decide to go forward with all these items is, we have to have a discussion at a higher level, also with my tenant, to see what the future holds before we go and do all this stuff. We just want to be a good, we want to, we want to be a good, a good property owner. So this is all a little new to us in that regard, so we'll do our best to work through this, whatever decision we decide to go by.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tremonti.
Chairman Chair, I missed the name, your name.
Mike Tremonti.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm David Holes, the president of Drivergent Transportation.
Welcome, both of you. There are.
In your contact information, how would they get ahold of you?
I, you want me to give it? Is that what you're asking? Like a phone number or email?
Just for the record, an address or a phone number, whichever you prefer.
So our address is, as a site plan, 34575 Commerce here in Fraser. The office number there is 586-800-3748.
We have three planning commissioners absent this evening, so should we take action on it? You need a majority vote, but you have the option of asking for a postponement also because you can wait for a full board. I think we might be postponing it, or, you know, might be postponing it because of the outstanding, outstanding items on the site plan itself. So that's going to have to come back with some of the items that are missing. So go ahead and tell us your story. Anything you want, that wasn't in the report that you want to share with us?
So we, as Mike had said, we moved into the property about four and a half years ago. We moved in January of 2020 officially, opened up, and two months later, COVID hit, and everything shut down for the next year. So it was very much a slow open for us, but coming out of COVID growth, our business has been growing very rapidly. You know, when we moved in, we had, I had two employees and me, and now the company has over 160 employees. So we're growing very rapidly, and, you know, when, when I got this property, it was completely empty, and now, as you've seen in your visit, our property is completely full. So with that growth has been space challenges, right? So we understand the needs that the city has from a planning standpoint and a consistency standpoint. You know, every property can't be the Wild West, right? There has to be some sort of constraint and, and commonality, so we understand that.
Okay.
Just trying to find the balance between the two, right? Something that makes sense for our operation versus, or as with the city. So things like the, like the berm that was discussed, right? 20 feet on each side and fencing, you know, your backyard's gone at that point, right? So there's, just trying to work together and figure out, you know, when we go back and find the missing pieces that are still needed in the plan, and then hopefully we can come with some suggestions on how we can find that middle ground.
Okay. We would love to have you come back with a revised plan and love to work with you to keep you there. I know you said you might be getting more buses than what you have now.
Yeah, and our, on our long-term plan is, obviously, we, this is not, everything's not contained here anymore, right? By the time we get to next school year, and I apologize, so our business, school buses are mentioned, but passenger transportation is our business, so most of that is in school bus, but some are in sedans, vans. We work with school districts all across Metro Detroit. Macomb County is our heaviest area, but we service all three counties and a large number of different clients. So with that growth into next year, we're most certainly going to have at least one other property location somewhere here in Metro Detroit, and that's going to alleviate the level of activity that's at this location, just from natural growth. But we are, at this time, planning to still remain in this property and operate in the business to a certain extent, so obviously we need to find, you know, an arrangement that works.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Holes. Commissioner Farina?
When you put that diesel tank in there, were you not aware that it had to be shielded and have fire suppression for diesel?
So fire suppression is not required, and the city fire department did not cite that. They did cite the international fire code and which, there's a few different things. The barriers, the pylons are probably the most significant thing that was required in that. It is not a public-use fuel tank, right? It's private use, it's just for our own fleet, so it's, the public aren't engaged in it. So fire suppression was not one of the things. Just the same with the building, doesn't have sprinkler system because the square footage is lower than what is required from the city ordinances, so. And as was mentioned, there was no permit or anything to our knowledge that's required, just the, you know, the fire department's review and asking that we meet that international fire code.
Do you have a copy of the planner's findings?
The one for today, the summary, the site plan summary?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any problem with any of it?
With the whole summary?
Yeah.
I don't know if I would say a problem, but as I said earlier, kind of finding a middle ground, that makes sense, right? For example, cementing the entire rear of a property would be an incredible expense all by itself, and I understand there's needs, as we discussed, for consistency, you know, with the, the ordinances that the city has. But we also look kind of on our side as parking vehicles outside are very much like parking in an RV storage or, you know, boat storage, things like that outside, where nobody's paving, you know, five, six acres of ground with cement, right? They put the asphalt millings down, they park their vehicles, there's not a lot of movement in traffic. So something like that, which we already have in place, is obviously more attainable from an ongoing business standpoint, and hopefully we can find, you know, something, a more middle ground like that. But in general, I, I don't think we have a significant problem with the overview, it's just trying to figure out how we make it work, right?
What do you do with the, if there's a large snowfall? Can you plow that gravel?
The asphalt. So in the, in the winter, it freezes, just like everything does, so that base is pretty solid, and if you have a good enough, I'm not an engineer, but in my experience back there, if you have a solid enough base properly installed, you are able to, to plow over it. Now, at this time, we have a lot of vehicles, so when the snow comes, not so much of it hits the ground, it's on top of the vehicles, right? So we get a little benefit that way. But we do have a landscaping company that does support the property, and plowing and salting is one of those things, and they, they are able to maintain it through the winter.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one other question.
Sure.
To analyze this and get back to us, how long do you, I'm going to make a motion to postpone, okay? I think it'd be for your benefit because right now, you have to have three votes out of four, where you would have to have four votes out of seven, you know, so I think it would be in your favor to do that, as, as well as we don't have all the information I think we need.
Sure.
Okay? But how long do you think it would take you to get that information? And how fast would they need to get it back to you, for the next meeting or the meeting after that?
Are you talking for the, for potential variance or your site plan?
Site plan.
Um, I guess that was almost a trick question because they probably would want the variance because the 20-foot landscaping buffer doesn't quite seem feasible, but, um, so they would have to go to the next zoning board meeting. The deadline for that application would be May 13th to notice it properly for the June meeting, and then, since our zoning boards happen after planning, it would be July then, I would say.
So it probably wouldn't be by May 13th. That would be a pretty tight turnaround, I think, to get, to ensure that we had everything we needed, and especially if we have to submit.
So we're talking about you coming back to the, to the July ZBA meeting, which would put you at least in the August Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
That one might get tricky too, because the ZBA for July is on the 18th, not the 4th, so.
Yes, I know.
We'd have to, I'm not sure if you'd want to, well, we could, we could put them, we could put them on the site plan because site plan doesn't need noticing, so I guess that's not as tricky as if it was the other way.
I'm questioning, if we don't know what the applicant's going to come back with, how do we know if they only want that one variance to the landscaping? How do we know if it's not anything to do with the pavement in the back?
Well, they, they wouldn't need a variance for the pavement.
It just, that is required no matter what.
Well, it would have to be, it could be changed by Planning Commission.
By Planning Commission, okay. I can see the ZBA questioning, well, you don't have this on the site plan and yada, yada, yada. But I guess they have to be only concerned with the variance itself.
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay.
We're kind of narrowing it down.
So if you, if you know what variances you want to go for, you could apply for those before your site plan's updated. If that's helpful in speeding the process up, if that's what you're looking for.
Unless I have a question for you.
Yes.
Can I just make a motion to postpone to when the applicant is ready to come back to the planning commission?
Yeah, so similarly to, do you remember last month for Foundation Solutions, we kind of had a similar situation? So my recommendation would be to postpone to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, following the applicant obtaining any and all necessary variances and providing revisions to the Office of Planning, to the site plan.
That is my motion.
Did you get that, Ms. Green, yet?
It's at seven thirty-one on the tape, so sure we did.
So essentially, just to clarify, that would mean that the applicant would have to go get the variances, make the revisions that the planning commission discussed this evening, and then essentially administration would bring the site plan back, if that makes sense. Okay.
Does Mr. Trumonte and Mr. Holes understand the process then?
I believe I do.
Yeah, well, for clarity, when we submit for variances, we're submitting them to the zoning department?
The building department.
Building department, same department as your site plan.
Okay, so, and that is addressed separately before we come back? So those variances could be approved and then put onto a new site plan as an approved variance?
Correct, you got it.
And I'm on the ZBA, so I understand.
It's good to know people.
Do you want to make your motion?
I did.
Oh, that was your official one, okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Farina and supported by Commissioner Toller to postpone site plan twenty-three dash zero four, three, four, five, seven, five Commerce Road, divergent transportation, basically simply put, to come back to the planning commission after ZBA action. Ms. Green, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Chair Zornicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Farina?
Yes.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you too, gentlemen, thank you for your patience.
Before you go, I want you to make sure you get a copy of Anderson Eckstein's engineering report for Bob Logan, because it talks about stormwater and community drain easements should be on your site plan, and I don't think that was in your review.
Yeah, I believe we have that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I did, I think I noted in the email that if it, there would be stormwater upgrades that they would be looking for, and it would trigger a full engineering review.
You have it, because if not, I have one right here, okay.
Beautiful.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We very much want to see you successful, by the way.
Good. You're welcome, have a great night. Agenda item number seven, unfinished business is signed ordinance, Ms. Seer.
All right, well, first off, thank you everyone for your flexibility last month, I appreciate it. And this is our, this is the, just about the finish line, so this is our last discussion, but it is, it is a lengthier one. We've got a lot of items to cover. So I guess first off, here's what the adjusted schedule looks like. This was in coordination with Mr. Denault in my, in my office, and so this is what we're, we're shooting for. So after this meeting, we're going to really try to hit the ground running on drafting the full ordinance, making it cohesive, and getting all those pieces to speak to each other. So during the June meeting, we won't have an ordinance for you, but no, we'll be working hard in the background to get that, that draft to you by July seventeenth. So then, we'll have the full draft ready, and planning commission can input any final revisions or additions, and then we're hoping for a August or September adoption by city council. Any questions on this schedule or comments? All right.
I wouldn't go to the August meeting if.
No, no.
We'll just pile every.
Mr. Denault will be there, that's fine.
I'm going to recommend you come.
All right, so this feels like a long time ago, and it's because it was, March sixth meeting. Any comments on anything? We talked about temporary signage, it's in the memo, what we discussed a little bit. And then for temporary signs, there's also including some research on what peer communities are doing, which varies widely. So I'm not sure if this board has a direction on, on temporary signs, if they want to have a permit, or if they want to just have a registration, or if they just want to not have it at all.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit lost, where are you?
When you say they, who, who you mean?
Uh, sorry, if, if, if we want our ordinance to require temporary sign permits.
A permit or just a registration?
A registration, yeah, I think is the.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? I hate to interrupt, but will you be considering campaign signs, political signs as temporary? I'm only asking this because I thought I read that somewhere, and if people have to come in and get a registration for each, or, you know, for, I mean, at times, we might have a hundred people putting out lawn signs. And if that's what you folks feel the ordinance should say, that's fine. I'm just asking, because I know it will add a great amount of additional work during a time when there's plenty to do. And maybe you could just make a, you know, an exception for those? I know the other day I sent you a question because I've already had my, my first request for, I've never had a clear understanding of what we allow and what we don't allow for campaign signs. We can put them in the right way, that's, that's a for sure thing, and there's a size limit, that's a for sure thing. But when can they put them up? How long can they leave them up with the recent freedom of speech issue? Can they leave them up forever? I mean, I've seen certain presidential signs up since the last election, and it's hard to be able to take them down because freedom of speech says you can put that in your front yard. So because I've already had my first candidate call, I'd look for clarification on what he can put up for the August primary, I just want to know.
I think, yeah, I think we currently do have them as considered yard signs or temporary signs.
Okay.
So, not sure how to rectify that one, I'm sure, yeah.
I basically just wanted to put it out there so everybody.
Yeah, of course.
Heard my concern when.
Do you really think that's a legal question? With election signs? I really do.
It likely is. I, I'm not sure I have the answer this evening, but I will definitely.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes.
So are we still trying to determine registration and or license for temporary signs?
Listen.
Yes.
I don't think election signs have ever been considered even temporary signs, have they?
I, that's what I'm, I'm rifling through trying to.
I was going to say, and I thought we discussed campaigns.
I thought we did too, but.
It looks like the state of Michigan has their own, like, rules purely for just political signs on their own roads, so I don't know if that would be.
That's just, that's just their roads though, right, not private property.
Whereas like, it looks like Rochester treats political signs as temporary signs as defined by the city ordinance as well. This is a lot of.
I think a lot of communities do that.
Yeah.
That have temporary signs.
Which means that technically, almost all of these communities and every person there should be applying for permits for each of their things. I was thinking, what, not enforced then?
And that, and I know, for instance, on election day, if there's a heated race, I inevitably will get ten calls, well, so-and-so has their sign here, so-and-so has their sign, and then my enforcement officer goes out and removes the sign, and then he gets yelled at, and then it's back up again in five minutes, so.
We can, yeah, we can look into seeing if, you know, campaign signs are something we can exempt from.
And I guess my request would be if you do feel like they should register, that's fine, we'll figure out a way to do it, but perhaps if there was no cost.
Perhaps what?
If there was no cost.
Oh, oh, no charge to it.
Yes, if, if they could just come in and say, you know, they were going to put some signs out, we would keep a listing of them. Yeah, but no, maybe no charge?
Yeah, I think that's what we currently have written, the registration. And I, I mean, maybe, maybe there's some way we can only require registration for like businesses, not residences. Maybe that's a way to do it, we, we'll, we'll look into it a little bit more again.
I appreciate the time, thank you.
Well, thank you for speaking up. I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay, so we're, we're thinking registration, but no permit, and, okay. Sounds good.
I don't think political signs should be registered.
No, I don't think so either.
Item three under temporary signs, shall not, shall not be installed in such a manner that interferes with site or might be reasonably expected to interfere with vehicle site. We should have a minimum distance from the road there, and a maximum height, so that we don't allow that.
Okay, yeah, I think we can, we can add clarity to that. It might even be, has to follow the district it's in, those height and.
Okay, good.
Any other items before we get into new stuff? All right.
Still working on it, Frank?
We can always circle back.
Yeah.
Talk louder or go closer to the mic, I can't hear what you say.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk, I'll try to speak up. All right, so the first, first item is purpose and intent. So this is not, this is in the, I guess, planning memo, not the first memo that Mr. Denault produced. So that, we propose purpose and intent to start with. This chapter sets forth guidelines and criteria governing the erection, placement, maintenance, and removal of all signs, excluding those specifically exempted. Its purpose is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, as well as to preserve a visually appealing environment, all while meeting the identification and communication requirements of sign users. To fulfill this purpose, the following objectives shall be, shall guide this chapter and any subsequent revisions, additions, and modifications. So the first one, generally, ensure that signs are located, designed, constructed, and installed, and maintained in a way that protects life, health, morals, property, and public welfare. Public safety, protect public safety by prohibiting signs that are structurally unsafe or poorly maintained, cause unsafe traffic conditions because they are unreasonably distract motorists, have similarities to official traffic signs or hinder vision, and impede safe movement of pedestrians or safe ingress and egress from buildings or sites. Protect the aesthetic quality of the districts and neighborhoods. Prevent blight and protect aesthetic qualities by preventing visual clutter and protecting views. Prevent proliferation of signs in residential areas and eliminate abandoned signs and sign structures on unused fixture types and location. Lighting technology and control light levels. Free speech, the important governmental interests contained herein are not intended to target the content of messages to be displayed on signs, but instead seek to achieve non-speech objectives. In no respect do the regulations of signage prohibit a property owner or occupant from effective means of conveying the desired message. Nothing in this ordinance is intended to prohibit the right to convey and receive messages, particularly non-commercial messages such as religious, political, economic, social, philosophical, or other types of speech protected by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. Business identification, allow for adequate signage for business identification and other commercial speech, non-commercial speech and dissemination of public information, including but not limited to public safety information and notification as may be required by law. Foster economic development, ensure that signs are located in a manner that does not cause visual clutter, blight, and distraction, but rather promotes identification and communication necessary for sustaining and expanding economic development in the city, and discontinue non-conforming signs. It is the intent of this chapter that all non-conforming signs remaining in the city at the time of its adoption be removed and replaced as sites and signs around the city are altered. So any concerns, additions, subtractions on the purpose and intent?
Am I understanding this right, under discontinue non-conformity, it means that if this is a, code compliance would go out and look at these sites that are, these signs that are non-conforming and ask them to be removed? Is that what that says?
I think, my, my understanding is that it's, that they're not, the intent of the ordinance, or the intent would be for, you know, the provisions for these non-conformities to die out. I don't know if that means necessarily, you know, a targeted audit per se.
The way I read it is that once something is altered, then it's the intent of the ordinance that it, that non-conforming sign comes into compliance with the new standards.
Do we need to explain that so that?
I can say that would be better clarified as it was just stated by Ennis, right? Kind of clean up that language.
Yeah, we can, we can clean up the last one. Any other items?
I, I'm questioning number six, just because visual clutter, blight, and distraction is very subjective. I mean, who didn't, who has the right, you know, that's, looks like blight. And yet, the person who put up the sign said, that's not blight, that's.
Yeah, and anything that is blight might be able to be covered by public safety because it's a distraction or a, like, an actual general issue rather than a opinion.
Some signs, Madam Chair, might fall into disrepair, might be rusted, things of that nature. It's probably not subjective, but more objective, so to speak. Some characteristics of blight might be contrary to like the property maintenance code, or, you know, things of that nature, I think, is, is probably the intent to cover those items that are in disrepair, or, you know, something like that.
I'll also note that these aren't specifically standards, but more so almost an intro into the principles guiding. So they're still, they still are important because in the future, if ordinance amendments are being made, then they would probably be guided by these purpose and intent, and that's, you know, an interpretation is also guided by the purpose and intent. So they're still important, but it's not specifically an enforcing standard.
Okay. I think Commissioner Farina stepped up. There was a gentleman in the lobby.
Yeah.
Walking around, we're not sure what he wanted, that's what he's checking out, if he needed assistance or not, so, yeah.
Sign enthusiast probably, who got lost on his way in.
Go ahead, Ms. Seer, I'm sure that Commissioner Farina can check, you know, catch up.
So does this also fall into the, the category of like, kind of up to interpretation using the word morals in that general aspect as well? Like, I think that might be like laws.
Yeah, I think that word could probably be cut.
I don't really like the word morals, because that's super subjective.
I agree with you, and I'm glad you mentioned it, because I thought about it myself. All good out there, Frank, as far as you know, it's all good? Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we can take that out of there.
Cool, or even just sub it for laws? Because then it's just definitive, but then that's kind of just like, a given, right?
Say that again, Commissioner Cheller.
Uh, summing morals for laws?
Okay.
Um, and, or just deleting it entirely, if laws is just kind of a given.
Which, which one are we talking about?
Uh, general, under the first.
Number one.
Number one.
He's questioning the term morals, which I question also.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they're necessarily protecting laws.
That too, yeah.
But, uh, I, I think removing morals is a, is a definite.
Alyssa, what, how do you weigh in on that?
My thought was to maybe put safety there.
Ooh.
Typically, you see a lot of ordinances that say public health, safety, welfare.
Yep.
It wasn't an original idea, I'm sorry. It was the first thing that popped in my mind.
You're too honest.
It, it just flows, right, but, just an idea.
It's a, it's a good trinity.
Well, if it, if it is obviously pornographic, or, how do, how do we, we don't want something like that put up? I mean, I, if there's vulgarity on it, I would.
Public safety.
Is that public safety?
Absolutely, distraction.
I agree, I agree with you, but I want to hear the attorney say that.
I don't know if I can make that opinion, um, here tonight. I can look into it more.
Okay.
Um, in terms of whether or not we're still continuing morals in a lot of the sign ordinances, not including it.
That would be good.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think I've actually, I know I drafted this, I don't think I've seen morals in, in many, so, you know. I'm, I'm happy to swap it out for health, safety, and public welfare, I think that's a lot more standard as well. I think I'd have to look back into one of our many previous discussions to see, I, I feel like we might have mentioned what exactly we can regulate, um, especially with the passing of Reed v. Gilbert, so, um, I, I do think there's still, I do think there is still a way to regulate a vulgar content, though. That's not covered under freedom of speech, so.
Yeah.
Let me understand, the action is you're gonna change that to public safety?
Uh, we're gonna change it, so it'll be ensure the signs are located, designed, constructed, installed, and maintained in a way that protects, uh, health, safety, and public welfare. Uh, we can keep property in, I guess, if you'd like to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Health, safety, property, and public welfare. And you're gonna look at morals, okay?
All right, so miscellaneous items. Um, the first one that was noted in the original memo was temporary agricultural signs. Planning recommends removing that provision as it can be covered by temporary signs, just generally.
Good for me, sounds good.
Um, directional signage, so directional signs shall be considered incidental and should be limited to one sign at each entrance, shall not exceed four square feet, and four feet in height directional signs. Saturn entrance point may be located within a required yard, subject to the sight line and clearance distance restrictions set forth in this section. Uh, directional, informational, and traffic control signs placed by government entities are permitted in all zoning districts and shall be installed, to the extent applicable, in accordance with the manual on uniform traffic control devices.
I'm gonna diverge for just a minute, Alyssa. In the hockey land, there are no directional signs that were required in there. And it's still an open item, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but that just hit me.
Making a note.
Thank you.
Yeah, so directional signage, um, I guess I'm starting a discussion point, but, uh, I think Mr. Denault and I have kind of discussed it back and forth, and, um, I'm not sure, is, is limiting it to four feet something we wanted to? I'm thinking of, um, would directional signage also class, be classified as, uh, like, gas pump numbering? Because that tells them where to go, which pump, you know, which pump they're at, that's gonna be higher than four feet, likely. I'm not sure. So that might be something we wanna amend as well, or look into.
Make it higher, higher?
Um.
Larger?
Not larger, definitely not larger, I don't think for.
Oh, but higher?
But just not limiting it to four feet, or maybe clarifying what exactly directional sign. Uh, we do have a definition, but, um, because my, my understanding of directional signage is that it's just anything that helps navigate the site, site circulation, so, um, even things like, like clearance, clearance bars on drive-throughs, we don't consider those as, we don't, we don't require a permit for those, um, but they're still, it's, so I would say that's directional signage.
So we would limit those type of bars, is what you're saying?
I'm, well, as it's written, I would say yes, but I think that maybe we should look at that and redo that.
Right, that's true.
Again, I know, I, I know I'm presenting this to you, so.
That's okay, but yeah, I mean.
I guess I wanted to bring that up.
If we consider those signage, yes.
Or maybe we just don't consider that signage, that might be another item, might.
I don't know, you tell me, is that signage, or even the numbers on a gas pump, is that signage?
I would say it does fit the definition of what we, our definition of a sign is.
Okay.
Do I think we should regulate it? No. Besides the size, right, I don't think it should be able to be huge, but I don't think we should, you know, require a permit.
Correct, on that one.
Is my house number on my, my home signage?
Yes.
Yeah. I think we did, I think we do.
It's allowed.
What moment is that? We talked about it with, um.
Yeah, I think.
When we talked about home, home businesses, things like that. But we did, it is permitted, it's permitted without a permit.
I mean, when you put "open" on a door, push to open, is that a sign?
Yes. By definition. Are we regulating it?
Behind the window sign.
What about no smoking? Or, uh.
Isn't that getting a little petty? I, I'm thinking, yeah, we're going.
We're going down a rabbit hole.
Yes, we are, we're going down the rabbit hole, which is not good.
What's down the rabbit hole?
Window signs.
There we go, let's just go.
Here we go.
Um, I do have a discussion item on it, but I don't know how much of a discussion it'll actually be after kind of talking with Don a little more. But window signage is permitted, but the maximum size of the window sign cannot exceed 25% of the total glass area of the facade it's located on, and in no instance shall a window sign exceed 150 square feet in area, so, um.
I note that a lot of, uh, convenience stores and/or liquor stores have all of these window signs now.
Yes.
And I want to know, have we looked at other cities around here, and what are they doing about it, other municipalities? Because I don't want to try and enforce something that's not enforceable, you know?
Yeah, I did, I do believe I did look at them, I don't have that with me, I can bring that, I guess, next, well, I can bring it to June while we're drafting, um, as an action.
I consider all that signage blight and a distraction.
I do too, but, you know, it's, but I've asked that it be looked at, and the building department has not done that.
So as, as our ordinance is written, because this is a hot topic, um, we do permit window signage if the lettering's three inches or less. In certain districts, they allow temporary window signs up, up to like 15, I think one of them's 25%.
It's 25%, yes.
Yeah, I think.
But I'm talking about where we've sent the building department, it's like, the entire building is wrapped in this stuff.
Right.
And it's, that shouldn't be allowed. It's not only on the windows, it's on the brick on the outside of the windows, and it's beginning to look like a, not a, a nice neighborhood.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you checking with the state laws? I mean, it's good to look at other cities around us, but what about state laws?
I don't think, I think the state would delegate its authority on this to local governments through zoning. Correct me if you know of anything else, Ms. Erickson.
It's pretty much, federal case law probably controls more than any state law, I would think, because most of the time, obviously, the First Amendment's gonna be involved, so that would be federal.
Should be checked.
Of course.
Time, I was in a condo, and he knocked on my door and said, "No, no, you can't do that." "Yes, I can, want me to show you the federal law?" You know, so, uh, sometimes cities come up with ideas, but they're not legal, that's what I'm saying, you have to kind of compare, uh, state and federal laws.
For sure, yeah, and I'm, uh, you know, um, Alyssa's office has been doing that this whole time, making sure that we're not recommending anything that's violating any federal or state.
Good, that's what I was.
Yeah, no, appreciate, appreciate that check, for sure.
Other municipalities seem to break down window signs pretty aggressively, more than just that it's permitted in 25%, there's quite a bit more that we could add in. Like.
You want to mention some of the?
Yeah, so like, uh, window signs shall not obscure the visibility of the store interior or its merchandise, uh, displays. Um, all permanent signs must not exceed 10% of the total area of the windows located in the store. Phone numbers are not allowed. A lot of those are like additional things that are required by some other municipalities local to us that could be added in to hopefully limit a lot of the stuff, but like, the things that you guys are talking about, like these, you know, example, like a gas station, you walk up to it and there's Monster Energy covering 90% of the windows. I think that almost all municipalities, that would not be, like, that wouldn't fly, it technically isn't cool. I just don't, I'm trying to think of like, places I've gone to, though, and unfortunately, that seems to be like, just the way that gas stations are. So like, the whole enforceable aspect of it, I don't know, but there is more that we could do.
We're trying to enforce, I know that's not probably as helpful, um, but.
Talk, well, Bob, talk with Alyssa, and come back with a concerted thing, and I'll call Logan Dawson.
Regarding, um.
The enforcement.
Our current enforcement.
Or the definition of, of window signs, do we want to define it a little bit more than what it's defined here?
We do have a definition section to get through after this.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay.
And I, I would probably recommend not requiring a permit for window signs.
And the reason for that is?
Usually, uh, permits go through, through zoning and building review, I think most window signs are, you know, paper or just kind of flimsy things, I don't think they need to go through a full review and have a full fee for that. The fee would probably be more than the sign cost itself, likely, so, I think just regulating the, where they can be or what, you know, the, the dimensions, I think, the 25% or whatever percent would be a more, uh, reasonable way to regulate those.
Okay.
Speaking of permits, um, so, permits, permits required, it's unlawful for any person to erect, alter, or structurally change a sign unless the sign is specifically exempt without first obtaining a permit from the city. Any sign that makes use of electricity must in addition obtain, to a sign permit, obtain a little, an electrical permit. The following signs do not require a permit. Government signs, including those used to identify public facilities, government buildings, parks, temporary government signs used for decoration or for seasonal events or holidays. This includes highways and street signs, and signs authorized by road, a road agency in conjunction with infrastructure improvements. Uh, there's your address number, Mr. Farina, address numbers with numerical height no greater than 12 inches. Historical markers under the authority designated, uh, or designated authority of the local, state, or federal organization. Essential service signs and signs required by law. Placard or building markers no larger than two square feet in area. Fixed restaurant menu signs, uh, flags, subject to the following. Flags and flagpoles cannot be located in any right-of-way, flagpoles have a maximum height of 30 feet. No more than one flag permitted per lot in a residential district, and no more than three flags permitted per lot in all other districts, uh, 60 square feet in size. Mr. Denault and I were discussing if that 60 square feet's total, cumulative, or per flag.
Should be total, that's huge.
Probably cumulative, then.
Yeah, one, one flag, there'd be like a, a six by 10 flag, which is massive, absolutely massive. Like, your average, like, flag is just a three by five, so we're talking 15 square feet, and if you're going like, the next size up, four by six, you know, at the most, we can get to like 30 square feet for a flag.
Sounds like total, then. Uh, and then directional signs, which we kind of mentioned, maybe amending that four-feet height, or clearly defining what directional or what those kind of gas station number signs are, better. Any questions on, on these signs that we're recommending not be required for a permit?
Do you think that the, like, gas station signs would fall under like these, like, placard or building markers at all? Because it's kind of like a structure marker in a sense, in a sense too, because they're nice, just small numbers, or no?
I would say that those are, probably, that's probably not the intent of that.
Okay. No worries.
Maybe, we could define it that way, it's, yeah, it's definitely something that we're, we're probably gonna either have to add a definition, or, um, be less strict on height for directional signage, one of the two. And then, the, uh, again, of the original sign memo discusses historical markers, um, we address this in signs exempt from permits. And then, um, menu boards. So, these are the, the standards we're proposing for menu boards. One menu board, and one pre-order menu board for each drive-through lane. Uh, the maximum height for such sign should be seven feet, and the total area allowed for each drive-through lane shall not exceed 45 square feet. Menu board or order board signs shall be located in the interior lot or parcel, and shall not be readable from the exterior lot. The placement, size, content, coloring, or manner of illumination of the sign shall not cause traffic or pedestrian hazard, or impair, uh, vehicular or pedestrian flow. Uh, the volume on the menu board or board, order board shall be maintained at the minimum level necessary so that it's audible to users, but to minimize extraneous noise traveling off-site. Questions, comments, concerns? All right, now we get into definitions. The first one being the definition of a sign, so I, I just have the proposed definition up there, which would be any display or object which is primarily used to identify or display information or direct, or attract attention by any means which is visible from any street, sidewalk, alley, park, or public property, and is otherwise located or set upon in a building, structure, or piece of land. Definition does not include goods displayed in a window. Any issues with that definition?
Sounds like a sign.
So, the, um, the term that you see in the far left. So, the, the term that you see in the far-left column, that's what's in our ordinance today, just for clarification. So, accessory signs and advert, advertising signs, planning's recommending removing. We don't really see a need of defining accessory versus non-accessory. Additionally, we don't include provisions for advertise, or differentiate advertising, also, you know, versus, on, I suppose. The next definition is sign area, so it's another important one. "The entire area within a circle, triangle, rectangle, oval, or other geometric shape enclosing the extreme limits of writing, representation, emblem, or of any similar character together with any frame or other material or element forming an integral part of the display or used to differentiate the sign form from the background against which it is placed, excluding the necessary supports or uprights on which such sign is placed." And then, we have a, a diagram as well.
I like the diagram.
I know, it's good.
So any, any comments on sign area or clarifications that we think-
It's good to me.
Sign construction, we, we have no change from the existing. Shall mean to build, construct, attach, hang, place, suspend, or fix, and shall also include the painting of wall signs. Directional sign, a sign, a sign the sole purpose of which is to facilitate the flow of traffic within a site. Festoon signs, we have no change from the existing. A sign where incandescent light bulbs, banners, or pennants, or other such fixtures are hung or strung overhead and are not an integral physical part of a building or structure for which they intended, are intended to serve. Again, we have another diagram. If, if there's a definition that you think needs a diagram, we can also have our graphics department make one, so let me know on that as well. So for the flashing animator or moving sign, we recommend just changing it to moving. A sign that has any visible moving part, either constantly, or every move apart, either constantly or at intervals, flashing, scintillating, intermittent, or oscillating lights, visible mechanical movement of any description or other apparent visible movement achieved by any means that move, change, flash, oscillate, or visibly alters in appearance to depict action, create an image of a living creature or person, or create a special effect or scene. This definition does not include changeable copy signs and electronic message signs that imply with this article. Ground signs, a sign supported by, what was it?
Why doesn't it include electronic messaging centers? What is that? You have an exterior messaging center.
Those are the, I believe those are the signs that are, like, light up and, or that, the moving electronic signs.
Or like a gas station?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't it be governed by the same ordinance?
So we do have a, we have a different, I believe we define the elec- Did we not define the electronic? Or is it? Might have missed, no, we do, we define the electronic message board signs later on. So the, I think they're just specifying that, that these moving signs are different from the electronic sign. So a moving sign would be something like, it's got an arm on it that waves, kind of, or something like that. Or spins.
Oh. Cool.
I believe it's specifying that it does not include the changeable copy or electronic message-
Okay.
Signs, because there are parts of the ordinance that will prohibit moving signs, but not electronic.
Okay.
So ground sign, a sign supported by structures or supports that are placed on or anchored in the ground and that is independent and attached from any building or other structure.
Like it.
I forgot one up on the slide, but it's in your packet. So identification and nameplate sign, a wall sign identifying the occupant, business name, or address of a building or parcel of land. Mechanical movement sign, we, it's covered under moving signs, so we recommend deleting that one. Non-accessory signs, so it's kind of similar to the accessory signs. Previously, I would delete that as well. Outdoor advertising, we also don't, we wouldn't differentiate, so we wouldn't feel the need for a definition for that one. And, so I guess our current ordinance, this might be to a miscreant's point, the current ordinance does have a definition for political signs, so maybe we do want to bring that back and keep it. I think we initially recommended deleting it, as it's, be covered under temporary signs, but we might bring that back through our research and discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Portable signs, no change. A freestanding sign not permanently anchored, secured to either a building or ground, such as, but not limited to, trailers, an A-frame, a T-shaped, or inverted T-shaped sign structures.
Okay. That would include like the, the banners that say open, you know?
We do have that defined as a feather sign later.
I thought a feather sign was one of those figures that goes up there.
I think that's, I think that would be the cold air balloons we talked about earlier.
Right.
Can't keep all the signs straight.
It is, it's testing the memory. Every, every discussion's a memory challenge. Projecting signs. A, a building-mounted, double-sided sign with two faces generally perpendicular to the building or wall, not to include signs located on a canopy, awning, or marquee. Pile-in-or-pole sign, have no change, a type of sign located in the ground and with a clear space of not less than ten feet between the bottom of the face of the sign and the established grade. Real estate sign, no change, a business sign placed upon a property advertising that that particular property for sale, for rent, or for lease, is for sale, for rent, or for lease. Real estate development signs, similarly, no change, a temporary business sign placed on the premise of a subdivision or other real estate development indicate a proposed start to inform relat, uh, to, or to inform relative to availability. Residential entranceway sign, a sign located on a major thoroughfare and serving as the entrance marker to a residential development. Roof sign, a sign that is erected, constructed, or maintained on, against, or above a roof or parapet of a building or any portion thereof. A sign mounted upon a mansard fascia does not, and that does not project above the highest point of the roof or parapet is considered a wall sign.
Do we really want to allow roof signs?
I don't think, I'm not sure if this is necessarily allowing them, this is just defining them. So I might say in the ordinance, I'd have to, again, check back through what our working draft is. There might be a provision saying roof signs are not permitted. So this is saying, this is what a roof sign is.
Good.
But I can make a note to check on roof signs, on if we're allowing them or specifying. Residential entranceway sign, I think these got out of order, I apologize.
Yeah, I think we're- Signable area, the roof sign, signable area.
Looks like I might have-
Skipped a couple.
Might have, might have gotten them a bit out of order, so I'll, I'll just go back to the memo. Signable area, no change, a continuous wall area on the front of the building, which is free of windows and doors and major architectural design. So-called mansard roofs may be used for signable area provided that they're within twenty degrees of a vertical plane and wall signs on them are vertical, unless individual letters are used to make up the wall sign. So those are kind of those like, almost like Pizza Hut roofs, that's what those are. Vehicle business, we would change to vehicle sign. Vehicle sign, so we wouldn't change the definition, but we would just probably change the term to a vehicle sign. A vehicle sign, when, the vehicle upon which the sign is painted or attached is parked or placed upon the owner's premise primarily for advertising purposes. Currently licensed commercial vehicles in gen, in general daily off-site use are not part of this definition.
Are vehicle signs permitted, do you know, Maupin?
It was, I believe that we do not permit them. So I think this is just saying, clarifying that if you're parking your vehicle sign in your house, because that's where you go home to. I mean, if you're parking your vehicle with all your, you know, the painting of your business, that's not a sign. But if you have it out in front of your business-
In front of your business, advertising.
Then that's a sign, yeah.
That's not allowed, as far as you know.
Don't believe we're allowing it.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, I was just questioning myself.
Are you sure?
Because I see it.
Because there's that law firm down on Utica Road that has that car.
That's true.
Out there with-
Oh, the police, the police car thing?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's been there forever now.
Yes.
Coolest sign we got.
Okay.
I'll check where we're referencing vehicle signs as well, to see what we're saying in our ordinance.
Because I know we had a problem one time because they put a political sign on the side of it. It stayed up there for months and months and months.
Until, and then somebody said, take it down?
I think the next, next election-
Election.
Came up.
Well, that brings a question, then. I mean, we adopt a new sign ordinance, so any sign that's up like that, I mean, is, is it considered grandfathered in?
It, it would be.
Till it goes into disrepair.
Yeah, and if they wanted to alter, if they had, if they were altering it, then they'd have to bring it up, so. Yeah. That is, that is a good point, Mr. Farina. Like I said, I'll follow up on where that's being referenced. Wall sign, no change, a sign attached to and placed flat against the exterior wall or surface of any building, no portion of which projects more than twelve inches from the wall, but may, or may not project above the roof or parapet.
I have just one question. On all these graphics, Alyssa?
Yes.
Where, it says like bar and grill. Could anybody argue that it's only for bar and grill?
I don't think so.
Good.
Well, we could clarify and maybe put X, 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 X.
Or flower shop, or whatever.
As long as it's more than three, I think, we're-
No, if you're happy, I'm happy.
All right, here's our, our window sign. So these are, these are getting into terms that are not currently in our ordinance, but we think warrant a definition. Window sign, any sign that is applied, painted, or affixed to a window or placed inside a window within three feet of the glass facing the outside of the building. Customer, customary displays of merchandise or objects and material without lettering behind a store window are not considered signs.
Good.
Temporary sign, a, a type of non-permanent sign that is located on private property that can be displayed for a limited duration of time that is not intended to be a permanent display. Banners, feather signs, and yard signs are considered a form of temporary signage. Window signs, portable signs, real estate signs, real estate development signs, and yard signs may also be considered temporary signs if their use is non-permanent in nature. Banner sign, a type of sign on paper, cloth, fabric, or other flexible or combustible material of any kind that is attached flat against a permanent sign face or strung between two poles or structures. Feather signs, a temporary sign composed of durable lightweight fabric with a sturdy frame enclosed only a portion of the material's edge so it can remain upright and still be flexible in the breeze, generally shaped to be tall and narrow when affixed to the ground or other bottom support, affixed to a pole which is located outdoors and contains language or for advertisement, greeting, or similar messaging purposes, which is activated by the wind and is used by businesses and organizations to promote events, products, or services.
This one would be nice with a graphic.
That's true, being descriptive does-
Amen.
Good suggestion there, Commissioner Teller.
Yard sign, a sign, a small temporary sign characterized by a wire frame, non-durable message surface such as cardboard or paper, and are often inserted into lawn with wire posts. Although variations exist to the materials of the frame and message board, a consistent physical characteristic is its temporary and disposable in nature.
And your word "in" is not in there, so just make that notation.
Thank you. So instead of the cold air balloon, we're actually recommending air-blown sign. A balloon or other airborne flotation device, the wind dancers, those are, those balloon people, which is tethered to the ground or to the building or other structure. Billboard, a large sign erected, maintained, and used for the purpose of displaying messages that can be seen from long distance or read from a vehicle traveling at high speeds. A billboard sign differs from a freestanding sign based on its size. Billboard sign is two hundred square feet or greater in size. An off-premise sign is a sign that pertains to a business, person, organization, activity, event, place, service, or product not principally located or primarily manufactured or sold on the premise on which the sign is located. Electronic message board sign, which, seeing how we define it here, should probably be changed in that previous one to be consistent instead of center. An electric, electrically activated changeable copy sign whose variable message and/or graphic presentation capability can be electronically programmed. Electronic message boards are typically, typically use light-emitting diodes as lighting sources. Anipie signs, a sign on a structure other than an awning made of fabric, metal, or other material that is supported by columns or posts affixed to the ground and may be, also be connected to a building or supported by and projecting from a building and providing protection from the elements. Menu boards, a sign providing items and prices associated with a dri, with a drive-through window. Flag, any sign printed or painted on cloth, plastic, canvas, or other like material with distinctive colors, patterns, or symbols attached to a pole or staff and anchored along only one edge or supported, or anchored at only two corners. Directory sign, a ground-
What if it's, it says printed or painted on cloth? What if it's sewn? Like the American flag, my flag that I bought has sewn stars on it. Should we add that in there, or am I going down another rabbit hole?
Yeah, I think that's worthwhile, or maybe eliminating that aspect entirely of the painted. We can see which one bears better, but definitely not trying to prohibit American flags by any means.
I missed that, you're, you're taking out printed or painted, is that what you're doing?
You could put printed, sewn, or painted. You could still include all of them.
Include sewn. Are we missing any other, any other way to create a sign, is my worry?
I am not a seamstress.
You could also be a painter, evidently. Well, we'll check on this one as well, and look at some examples, and make sure that we're covering our bases for flags.
That fall into the category?
Directory signs, a ground or building sign that lists tenants or occupants of a building or project with unit numbers, arrows, or other directional information. And sign face, the portion of the sign used for display of a signed copy, including all background area, pictures, and any other advertising devices shown- any other advertising devices shown in or on the sign. Sign frame and supports are excluded from this definition. Any, any lingering questions, comments right now? If not, you know where to find me, here's my contact information. Feel free to, you can reach out.
You know where to find me.
I love it.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah.
Alright, that, that brings us to the, the end of sign, sign discussions, and now your heavy lifting's over and ours is beginning.
And then we'll
Alright, thank you.
When you're coming back, June?
July.
July.
I'll, I'll come back June with some examples from the, I believe, window signs, but
But the, the draft itself is in July.
Yep, the draft itself, expect that in July.
Okay. Alright. Alright, we're gonna move on. Agenda item eight, public communication on non-agenda items, um, there are none. Nine monthly report, April twenty twenty-four, did we get a report? I didn't get a report.
Did you not get a report?
No, I got it in the ZBA, I didn't get it in the planning commission.
I apologize, planning commissioners.
That's okay.
That means I
Anything new?
Also, let me pull out my zoning.
Yes. Mr. Farina has it in front of him.
I believe, uh, Ms. Erickson can start off with hockey land, I think it was a little bit discussed, I, I do this every meeting, so I'm sorry, apologies.
We have one document remaining. I was in contact with their attorney this morning. We are hoping to get everything wrapped up here in very short order, but we are down to one item.
Plus, you're gonna check on the item I mentioned.
Of course, directional signage and
Plus, I'm gonna drive by and look at that bicycle rack up close.
Okay.
And pay a visit, probably.
Also, uh, if you could mention the building department, their fence is, uh, it says fences must be maintained. It's half torn down, half laying on the ground.
Where's that at, on which side?
It's on the north side of the field that they purchased.
Alright, I'll note it, uh, building. Uh, so three-two-six-six-oh Utica, that's that, um, strip mall, car wash to strip mall. They are in the demolition process and they are about ready to start the buil- getting another building permit, they still have to meet with engineering for a pre-meeting before and they're still getting their building plans finalized, construction-wise.
I have a question. There are two walls left up.
Thank you. Were we aware of that when it came in front of us? Okay, I thought maybe
Um, they, they told us that a car crashed into it
Correct.
and demolished the, the walls, so they were originally using their original structure for, they were going to use the original structure for the, the the bones of that building, if you recall, and their proposal. They're still proposing to build it to the same dimensions as was approved, though, they're not changing those, so.
So that's, those two walls are the only thing they could salvage out of that?
That, that's my understanding.
Good.
Another question on that, and then I don't know how Fraser does demolition. But there was no fencing around when they went and pulled down the, down. There's no fencing around it now. Should there be fencing?
I'm also not entirely sure of our demolition processes, I can follow up with Bob on that.
I'd be curious as to, you know, what requirements we have with that. It seemed odd when I saw the big trucks in there and it was just wide open. For safety reasons, I guess.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, again, apologies that this didn't quite make it into the, the packet.
Was it in the digital packet? Cause I apologize, cause I
No, I don't think, I think I might've just missed it and that's
I didn't catch it.
an oversight on my part, so I apologize. So, the use variance for, for, uh, behind Schott's Market, one-six-six-five-nine, um, that was denied at the April meeting. Three-four-four-zero-zero Klein, which planning commission saw last April. Uh, they went to ZBA, ZBA, had some recommendations to postpone, revise, postpone, so they'll be back tomorrow to seek their variances and if they obtain those, then I, I believe they'll likely be back for the June meeting from planning commission.
If you do have the report, you didn't mention sheets, sheets you, you have here is tentative Lee in July. It's now tentative Lee August, is what I understand.
Yeah, this did, this, um, the one the monthly report that the zoning board got, which would have been the one the planning commission got as well, that was sent out before, um, the
Okay.
community meeting and before I was aware that Mayor Lustich would be absent during July. So, um, you're correct, August is looking like the earliest. Um, it's currently being reviewed by uh, Mr. Andrews and he'll review it and they'll go back and forth with Sheets, their legal counsel. And that might take some time, so we believe
City council, potentially on their August meeting, will have Sheets as well as the sign ordinance.
Potentially.
That's a lot.
We may rearrange that. Might have to call an audible on that.
Or just, yeah, yeah, so it's a coffee, it's a coffee meeting, for sure. So, and then I think lastly, three-one-two-five-three Utica, that's Sunbelt Rentals. There was a hiccup with the, the noticing on, they had two, two properties in that and only one got noticed. So a little bit of a weird situation and administrative oversight a bit, so um, we had to postpone it and they'll be seen tomorrow altogether, so. I believe that's, that's it for, um, next steps and updates. I, I guess I will say on the, a little bit further horizon, pending city council approval, we are looking to do a full zoning ordinance rewrite. So, that'll be a, a big project, I think we're projecting a eighteen-month timeline on that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I interject that your planner wrote a grant for that?
I didn't hear you, and I'm sorry.
The planner wrote and obtained a grant to facility?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure you do.
Well, that's great.
She did great.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we are getting, uh, fifty grand in mishta funding for that project and we're hoping that city council will approve a budget of an additional thirty-five grand over the course of eighteen months, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're gonna divide it into two years.
Yeah, so, you know, finger, fingers crossed that
I agree.
goes a long way, but
Great job, good, go on.
So, again, we have to still get it approved, but I think it's looking, um, optimistic for that. I believe that's all on the report.
Alright. And Lauren, on the, um, PowerPoint, your monthly report still says twenty-twenty-three, so change that.
I guess we are, we are in twenty-twenty-four, huh?
Just in case anybody in the audience sees it and we say, okay.
Got some great attention to detail there.
That's me.
She's very good.
She, I can tell.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to agenda item ten, zoning board of appeals member liaison report. Commissioner Farina.
We did have a, an April fourth meeting and there are three items that we, uh, considered there, one, she talked about Sunbelt Rentals at three-one-two-five-three Utica Road. Uh, they were looking for a variance and, um, we voted to postpone that, um, meeting as the applicant requested, so that they could get things ready for us. Also, uh, ZBA Foundation Solutions at thirty-four-four-hundred Klein. Excuse me. We had a public hearing and, uh, to, we postponed that, uh, for the applicant to revise his plans with additional parking spaces unidentified and come back for next month. And finally, uh, the request at, for Suite B at sixteen-six-fifty-nine, a fourteen-mile road, uh, to create a business, a use variance in the CBD tri- district. We could find, uh, no way to, uh, accept that and that was declined. So that's the extent of the meeting that we had, um. And we will be having a meeting tomorrow. And that will be looking at Sunbelt again, Sunbelt, uh, Rentals, two yes, Sunbelt Rentals. And, uh, Foundation Solutions again, so. That's it, that's the extent of what we have.
You have a busy agenda again tomorrow.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Farina. Agenda item eleven, commissioner's comments on items of interest and concerned, or, and/or concerned, I should say. Commissioner Toller, do you have any comments you wanna share?
No, not today about, uh, anything that we talked about, it's, it's been fantastic. Very thorough.
I wouldn't. You're doing a great job.
I agree.
Yep.
Stop shy.
Happy to have, happy to have him aboard. Things are, um, progressing, uh, I, I understand we now have a code compliance officer on board. He's been on board for approximately a month now.
Chuck, I think he's talking about you.
Oh, I think he's been, I've, he might be even longer than a month, I don't know, Miss Greenia, you I don't know when he started, but I feel like he's been here for a while.
Cool.
Maybe my, my time's obviously off with the April twenty-twenty-three, though, so I'm near a year.
I just caught it myself.
No, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the catch.
Alright. That's all. I thank everybody for, uh, doing a great job.
Commissioner Barr, you have any comments?
Not today.
Okay. Ms. Sarah, any comments?
Um, I just appreciate everyone's flexibility last month as I dealt with some family matters and appreciate the understanding.
You're quite welcome. And Ms. Erickson, do you have any comments?
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Greenia, any comments beside what you already brought to our attention this evening? Which we appreciate.
I actually just wanna add on to Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Farina's comment about a code enforcement officer. At the, uh, budget workshop, they did discuss adding another one.
Oh, that would be fantastic.
So they would have two, um, and most of council, it appeared felt very strongly that that would be a good idea.
Terrific.
Right, so yeah, that'd be great.
That's great for the city, there's a lot of things that need to attention, so thank you. Um, I have no comments, believe it or not, I have, well something simple, are there any new applications coming next month? Do we have anything in the hopper? Anything exciting, Lauren?
I don't think, not after planning.
Okay.
Everyone wants to go to zoning. They heard they're more fun, I guess, I don't know.
That's probably true. I'm thinking if we have nothing, will we have a meeting if there's, you know, we don't, we're not doing the sign ordinance, we don't have any applications? Think about it.
Yeah, I, if we don't have anything, then I think we could, we could definitely uh, cancel that meeting, cause we're definitely gonna meet the minimum, I think we already have met the minimum for planning commission meetings that
Okay.
MPA EA requires, so
Okay, alright.
I will keep everyone posted, though.
Right, I know you will, I know you will. Okay, alright, so, um, ready to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Toller and, and support by Commissioner Farina to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, and motion carries, thank you, thank you for a good meeting, everyone.
Thank you.